Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for June 19th, 2018. I'm Commissioner Bob Blake, Chair of the Board this year. Today we have a public hearing on the speed limit schedule for various county roads. Before we get started, I'd like to do a few introductions. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, to my right is Commissioner John Hutchings. To his right is Labanita Boomer, Clerk of the Board. To her right is Assistant County Manager and Budget Officer Robin Campbell. With that in mind, I'll read the purpose and then talk about the sign-in sheet. We'll go over the sign-in sheet first, actually. So, at the back, there's a sign-in sheet, and I have one here for those who wish to sign in and testify on behalf of this hearing and before the Board. You'll have 30, uh, three minutes on the clock as Labanita posted up there. When you get to the three minutes, the end of it, there'll be a little kind of a "ah" sound. That's the end of your time, but if you're in mid-stream or mid-thought, I want you to finish your thoughts because that's super important to us, but at the same time, I'll politely encourage you to finish up your thoughts. Uh, when you come to the podium, just generally tell me where you're located or reside in the county, and just give me your first and last name for the record. Alrighty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, the purpose of this is the Transportation Section of the Public Works is asking for the Board of County Commissioners to consider setting or altering the speed limit on following county roads. Boston Harbor Road Northeast from Boston Harbor Extension Road Northeast to 73rd Avenue posted 30 miles an hour to 25, so a reduction of five. Boston Harbor Extension Northeast from Dead End to Boston Harbor Northeast unposted 50 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. And third is the 52nd Avenue Southwest from Dead End to Black Lake Belmore Road unposted 50 miles per hour to 25 miles an hour. And finally, number four, 184th Avenue Southeast from Yates Road Southeast to SR 507 unposted 50 miles an hour to 25 mile an hour. The staff has reviewed the data on road sections, and the recommendations are based on generally accepted analysis guidelines established by the Public Works 2015 Strategic Plan and by Resolution 12083 adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on November 22nd, 1999. So, I've already read the ti- uh, the sign-in sheet, and I've already given you the rules as far as the three minutes, and just to reiterate, your time cannot be given to another person. So, with that in mind, I'm gonna ask Bernie, Bernie Sissons, to come to the podium, staff members from Public Works, who's an expert on this, and give us a little bit of background. And the Board will have a few questions and comments, and then we'll add the testimony part of this. So, Bernie, how you doing?
Um, good. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Bernie Sisson with Thurston County Public Works Transportation Section. So, basically, the speed limit revision procedure is outlined by the resolution, and anyone in the, in the county can, can request a speed study be done or a traffic study be done on their road. When that's received, we gather physical data on the road, we have meetings with the residents, and of course, observe what the traffic is doing onsite. We also talk to the, uh, the Sheriff's Office and the Target Zero Coordinator, as well as anybody else in the community that might have comments regarding the speed limit revision. So, with that, I'll proceed with the individual roads. So, Boston Harbor Road, probably glasses might be a good idea. So, Boston Harbor Road, um, from Boston Harbor Extension Road to 73rd Avenue Northeast. This was requested by the Boston Harbor Neighborhood. It is one-fifth of a mile section. Um, the, the volume is approximately 800, average daily traffic. The prevailing speed is approximately 35 miles per hour. The road is punctuated by seasonal recreational vehicles, also bus stops, uh, school bus stops, pedestrians, and bike traffic. We are requesting at this time to lower the speed limit from 30 miles per hour posted to posted 25 miles per hour, and this is to provide continuity of speeds with the rest of Boston Harbor Road, which is running north of this intersection, which is also 25 miles per hour, and also to enhance the, the congestion that occurs at this gateway to the neighborhood. So, the comments that we received were generally in favor of, of this change. Next, the Boston Harbor Extension Road, Dead End to Boston Harbor Road. This is a one-eighth mile section of road. It is, has a very low ADT, approximately 30 to 40 vehicles per day. The prevailing speed is 25 or 26 miles per hour. It is a dead-end residential road. Again, it is subject to seasonal recreation vehicle, recreational vehicles, also residential pedestrians, biked. It is a narrow, treed residential road. Uh, the, all of the comments we received so far are in favor of the change, which is a unposted 50 miles per hour to a 25 posted miles per hour. Number three, 52nd Avenue Southwest, Dead End to Black Lake Belmore Road. This was requested by a resident along the road, Danny Truitt, who is here today. It is one-third of a mile in length. The ADT is pretty normal for the amount of residents there. It's about 200 vehicles per day. The prevailing speed is 28 miles per hour. It does have a horizontal curve about midway through the road, and this is, of course, been posted for curve warning signs. It is narrowed and treed. Uh, there is a, there is a residential private road coming up from the south called Clipsom Lane. We received one comment so far, and that was in, that was in favor of this change. The last road, 184th Avenue Southwest or Southeast. This is from Yates Road to SR 507. So, this is on the west side of 507. This was requested by Alexandra Connor, who is a resident of this road. It is one-quarter mile in length. The ADT is about 200 vehicles per day. The prevailing speed is a whopping 15 miles per hour. It is a treed residential road, and because of the mobile home park, there's lots of pedestrians and bikes. It is a narrow gravel road, except for as it abuts SR 507. We've received one comment so far, and that comment was in favor of this change of unposted 50 miles per hour to a posted 25 miles per hour.
No, why do not?
Aside from email contact responses, has there been telephone or any other responses or outreach or incoming information?
Uh, yes, there's a, a large number of emails as well as telephone calls, and I did my best to give you copies of the emails, as well as, as well as, you know, tried to do word-for-word whatever the telephone conversations that occurred.
And anybody speak in, in opposition to lowering the speed limit?
Um, so far, only as far as Boston Harbor Road, there were 14 comments received altogether, and all of them were in favor, except one, which was neutral.
Neutral, okay. Thank you, Bernie.
Did you have a hearing over at the Boston Harbor Fire Department?
Uh, we did have an open house, and we had an open house for all of these roads on October 3rd. We had an additional open house for the Boston Harbor Neighborhood at the fire station, I believe, the first week of December.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Are you good?
Uh, I'm good, thank you, yeah.
Okay, sure. We might have other questions in a second, Bernie, but we'll see. So, I'll go to the signing roster here, and the first person that we have on the list is Bob McDougall. Hello, sir.
Yeah, Bob McDougall, I live on 185th.
Can I get you to come to the mic, sir? Or we can bring him, well, I gotta get him a camera, so.
Yeah, my name's Bob McDougall and I live on 185th. Uh, and my question would be, what is the main concern about that 184 that goes to the Yates Road? Is it speed or is it dust?
Sure, this is your moment, sir. We'll get Bernie to answer in a second, but I just wanna make sure you get your three minutes.
Are you in favor of that? Or can I guess maybe we can ask, can we ask? Are you in favor or opposed to something, sir?
Pardon me?
Are you in favor of a speed limit change or opposed to a speed limit change?
Well, I see no reason for a, uh, speed change. There's very little traffic that goes up that road. There's only three people that live beyond the Yates Road, and, uh, at the Yates Road, that's a 90-degree turn, anybody doing 50 miles an hour ain't gonna make that turn.
Ain't gonna make that one, okay.
And the county has always put dust control down every year, and I'm sure if they continue, there'd be no problem with that.
Maybe for consistency.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's about all I got.
Thank you for your words and your comments, sir. Alrighty, the next person who said yes, is that TJ Reynoso?
Reynoso.
Uh, Reynoso, come on up, ma'am, how are you? Reynoso, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's fine. Um, I live on Boston Harbor Road at the corner, at the four-way stop of 73rd Avenue and Boston Harbor Road, and every single day, we see multiple cases of people speeding, running the stop sign. There's the marina down the road, people are racing to get their boats in. On Friday nights, there are big parties with live music and lots of alcohol, and people are racing in and racing out. And even though we live about two blocks away from the marina, the parking on the narrow streets in front of our house, from the four-way stop to the three-way stop, sometimes filled all the way up the street, and it's a walking neighborhood. There are elderly people, children, pets, and we have a, we have a bike lane that goes out as far as 73rd Avenue, and then it stops. But when the parking is happening for events, and because of the boat launch in the summertime, sometimes there's not enough parking space at the boat launch, and so there are boats or trucks and boat trailers parked up and down that street during the summertime as well, um, on the, um, bike lane, which the walkers always use as well, and it makes it very hazardous. I would like to note that Bernie noted that the ADT, I think that stands for approximate daily traffic, was 800 on that stretch of road, and the prevailing speed is 35, and the speed limit posted is 30. I saw the data that was taken from that, and they eliminated all of the outliers from the data. That is, people who are going above a certain speed limit, like 50, that data was not even included in the, in the general thing, so that's, that's a minimum. I have here 14, 13 letters from various people in our community who were unable to attend today, and I would like to submit them, every one of them, and they are succinctly written in concern of safety for people who are out walking, and it is very much a walking neighborhood, to please, please lower the speed limit for us, to keep our children, our elderly people, our pets safe. Is there any question?
Uh, no, no, no.
Would you like me to read the letters? Um, there are, by 13 different people, or would, would you accept them as a statement?
Would definitely accept them, because you're about to hit the thing. So, if you can give them to Bernie behind you, and then let her give them to her, and they'll come that way, and we'll all have the chance to be able to see what they're saying in those letters.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. So, the next person I have on the list is Mr. Thomas Schumacher. Hello, Tom, how you doing?
Tom Schumacher, I live at 72.
Sir, can you do me a small favor? Yeah, you go there. Pull it up just a tad more.
7232 Boston Harbor Road Northeast. You'll notice it's the same address as the last.
Tom, can I ask you another favor?
As the last speaker.
Pull the microphone just a little bit more, we can't hear you. There we go.
You guys have a hearing loss like I do?
No, I want the whole. Go ahead, I'm so sorry, but thank you.
So, my wife did a really wonderful job of covering all of my high points. Isn't that the way it is? So, um, and I wanted to bring your attention to a couple of items that have made the newspaper recently. Pedestrian and bicycle deaths in Seattle, not Seattle, the whole state, have increased. We had 122 deaths in the last year in Washington. We're one of 22 states that has more deaths than we have less death. Cars are safer, 16% down number of fatalities in cars, 27% increase in pedestrians and bicyclers. So, I'm an old researcher, and I love data, and I, I found this study, just came out this year, 2018. The Governor's Highway Safety Association, it's a, uh, I think it's a government-funded group, and you would be surprised what they report in here. Boston Harbor should be the, uh, bellwether, poster child, if you will, example of what a community should not look like. We have no crosswalks, we have no room to walk, we're sharing all this space with big trucks pulling boats. How many of you guys boat? You come out there and launch your boat? It's a state facility. So, it's, it's important to me to say that somebody is going to die in our ne- our neighborhood, and if you were to come to my house and sit on the porch, you would be equally convinced of what I see, um, daily, especially during boating season, especially when alcohol's being served at the marina, and, um, I'm done, 58 seconds left, wow.
You got extra time. I interrupt you early on, you got some more time.
That's okay. Please, please reduce the speed limit. Yes, please do that.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Oh, I'm gonna give this to you, Bernie will.
Just give it to the lady, or Bernie, either one, sure. So, the next person I have on the list is Pat McFaden.
I've changed my mind.
You changed your mind, okay. Alrighty, so there's been a number who select to note, I just look out the office and see if there's anybody that's changed their mind or had a second thoughts who would like to come up to the podium and express their views and testify in one way or the other. I see another one? Okay, great. So, is anything additional you have to add, Bernie? I have one more question for you. As far as coordination, um, if these were to be voted on to be reduced or altered in some sort of way, how is it coordinated with the law enforcement agency to be able to do what level enforcement is able to be done?
Well, as a part of the process for the speed limit revisions, the representatives from the Sheriff's Office usually go over, you know, what we're recommending prior to the open house, and in fact, Lieutenant Countes did, uh, did come to the open house as well as the Boston Harbor Open House in, in December. So, the, the feedback I've received from the Sheriff's Office is that they're satisfied with these recommendations.
Okay, great, sure. Alrighty, so, with that in mind, any other questions or comments from you or?
I, I got a sense that somebody out there was wanting maybe to testify somehow. Did we miss somebody?
I actually did.
Hey, sure, come on up there, yeah. Thank you, Bernie.
Better call them out.
So, just first name, last name, and generally where you're from in the county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do me a favor and lift the mic up just a tad?
Thanks, Commissioner, for noticing my fidgeting, and, um, so, I wanted to thank you for having this today, and my name is Linda Kildall, and my husband and I, Jeff, live on Boston Harbor Extension Road, which is right now unposted 50 with the recommendation to go down to 25, and I just wanted to, um, voice my support for that, for that proposed change, because, um, we don't get a lot of traffic on our road. As Bernie mentioned, it's a small road, but when people do speed, and there are young people, especially in the summer, that speed, it's frightening, and what's, what this process has been enlightening to me, I didn't know the speed limit was unposted 50. So, it's even, it's shocking to me that somebody could get pulled over, or they, if they were to be pulled over, if police was to see that, they might not even get a ticket, which is scary. So, I just wanna voice my concern and thank you for, for having this, and support for my neighbors in, um, we'd get, getting these speed limits reduced. So, thank you.
One request I thought I, can you say your last name again for me, please?
Kildall, K-I-L-D-A-H-L. Thanks.
You have an email in here, I think. Do you? Was there an email sent in here? I think I read your name in here somewhere, in an email.
I'm sorry, I don't think so.
A letter or something?
Uh, we had an open house.
Okay, well, we did attend the open house, so, yeah. Thank you.
I know, I didn't dream it, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Alrighty, is there anybody else that'd come to the podium? Any fidgeting people? Okay. Any comments or questions now?
Nope.
The ones that Labanita had, those, did you wanna see those before you have any?
No.
Conclusions, or are they all in favor of reducing? Do you know?
I don't know, but it's, I think they, I was, we were told they were all in favor of reducing, reduction of speed limit.
All right.
And one was neutral.
Okay.
Bernie says they are.
Okay. So, with that in mind, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Can I say something?
Oh, you would like to?
Uh.
Can I get you to come to the microphone, please, ma'am?
I'll be quick.
No, I just need your.
I was drawing my motion.
Take your time, take your time, we're in no hurry. I just need your first and last name and where you're from in the county.
My name is Bonnie Tucker.
Oh, Bonnie, you're on here, sure.
I live with him on 185th Street, and 185th is just a continuation of 140, 84th, it just goes right up there, it's the same street, but I just heard that somebody met, somebody put in the figure of 200 cars a day going through there, and I'm just saying, there's no more than 30. There's just not enough people, there's not enough cars. That's probably the top number that would go down that road every day. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your time, ma'am. Alrighty. You ready to get up something?
Daily volume, I was just looking at daily volume.
Right, take our time.
Are we allowed to discuss this after we close the meeting?
Well, if you're gonna close it, then you need to not do the second motion, because that discussion may pertinent, or you can have a discussion now.
I guess I'm, I am concerned about the dust issue and possibly or not lowering the speed limit. It's, it's an unposted road, so it's legally 50.
Bernie?
Is that right, Bernie?
Can you come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
So, it is an, down on 184th, it's an unposted road.
Correct.
So, it's legally 50.
Correct.
And so, aren't we trying to reduce the speed to something rational, just in case somebody wants to race up and down the road? And so, it'll, it'll help with dust, and it'll help with safety.
Um, yes.
It sounds like there might be some confusion over here.
Well, um, basically, if you kind of refer to the maps and the, in the background information.
In the packet.
Most of the traffic is kind of centered near SR, the SR, because you have a store there, and then right in the back of it, there's a mobile home park.
Yes.
And so, then the mobile home park is what's generating most of the traffic, which is, you know, closer toward the SR. So, and when we, when we do take data on the road, we try to take the average condition for the segment, in this case, the segment is really short, you know, quarter mile. So, um, most of the traffic would come from that mobile home park, and not from Yates and 185th beyond that.
Does that make sense, ma'am? Okay, okay. Okay, that's, that was my concern.
Bernie, Bernie, I have a question. There was a comment made that when doing a traffic study or a traffic survey study, that some of the outliers were thrown out, whether they're doing 10 miles an hour or 80, is it, how is a traffic study done to get to the mean speed?
Well, the traffic study is actually, when we take the data, we're, we're taking a snapshot of the average condition on the segment. Now, now, 880 might appear to be large, you know, for the segment, but you have to, you have to imagine that Boston Harbor is actually quite a large neighborhood, and so, especially since this data was taken closer to the summer months, that it would also already have some recreational vehicle traffic in it. So, 800 is not considered to be over the top as far as a neighborhood of this many residents. Usually, a neighborhood of this many residents has between, um, about 700 to 800, or maybe 600 to 800. A comparable neighborhood might be like, for instance, um, some of the, the Tango Wilds, which all have, you know, already 700 or 800 on, on their particular roads for ADT. So, it's, it's kind of similar, it's not the same, but it's similar.
And when, oh.
Hang on, hang on, let me get one.
And when we did, when we did the traffic study, is that done by the traffic counters, so we can measure speed, the distance between to get, to get the speed, the number of cars in the direction traveled, and is there any onsite, besides those traffic counters, is there any onsite, uh, data collected?
Um, no, but we have in the past, and basically, what, what we're going for when we're lowering the speed to 25 is, one, to provide continuity of speed through the neighborhood, 'cause like I mentioned, everything north of this intersection on Boston Harbor Road will now be 25. So, this would aid in the ease of enforcement, so, you know, deputy would say, okay, I'm at, over here at the intersection, I know everything north of that would be 25. So, that helps that. Also, because it's the, the entry, the main entry to their neighborhood, lowering the speed limit would help the periodic congestion that, that the, that the neighborhood is experiencing. So, that's the reason, and 25, of course, is the lowest speed limit that we post residential roads other than schools.
So, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you, Bernie.
Go ahead.
Uh, we're gonna have some questions from the audience here in a minute, it looks like, but I, I do have to ask Bernie something. And maybe Scott knows the answer to this, I don't know, but safety was brought up here, and so, what's the variation in roadway width in Boston Harbor? I mean, I know it's an older development, so there aren't sidewalks, you know, I don't think there's 60-foot right-of-ways. What, what are those right-of-ways out there?
Um, the, the right-of-ways vary, and the road width vary, and so, and this varying, it could mean that some of the roads within Boston Harbor, um, would possibly only fit one car at a time, but this particular section that we're, that we're talking about is actually a good entryway road in that it has significant shoulders as well as 11-foot lanes.
Okay. Well, I, I, it's not up to me, ma'am. The chair here.
I just gotta say, TJ, and Tom, this is not the normal procedure as far as Q and A in a, in a public hearing, so I'll, I'll just let you ask the question, I'm not sure I'll get answered, okay? Just keep it real brief.
A quick note, I was the person who did make the comment about the data collection and the outliers, and what I was referring to was when they took the data on the speed, and I wasn't even referring to the traffic county, across the data county, but then I saw the readout at the Boston, at the, um, fire hall, what they meant, and with the readout of all the traffic speed that were. at the fire hall, and it was the readout of all the traffic speed that was related, the collection of that data, okay? And I was just thinking, and what they did, when they gave the average traffic speed of 35 as opposed to 30, what they did with that data was they eliminated all of the outliers over a certain speed, and I don't remember if that was 45 or 50. I will tell you, there are a lot of people who are going that fast, and so it's huge, the data is actually faster than that, and that was the data in the outlier, if you follow this existing.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would just like to say that I.
I need you to come, I actually need you to come to the microphone. Sorry. First name, last name, where you're from in the county?
Danny Trup. And I live on 52nd Avenue. I just wanted to say that they didn't throw the data out. What they did is, there's a federal law that says there's an 85th percentile of.
Ma'am, can you talk into the microphone?
That there's an 85th percentile grouping that is what determines what the speed limits are, so it wasn't that they weren't going fast enough.
You have to talk to the board.
Oh, it wasn't that they took out the data that they were going too fast to not support the speed limit change, but that they were using the, I don't remember what the law is, but it's the federal 85th percentile, so they take the largest grouping of the most of the speed that's being driven, and use that to determine what speed should be for that road.
Mr. Chair, we also didn't, I didn't get her last name.
I didn't get the first name or last name, can you say it?
Danny Trup.
Oh, Danny, okay, you're on here, yeah, yeah.
So like, for instance, on my road, 52nd Avenue, when the tubes went out, everybody slowed down.
And how do you spell your last name for me, please?
T-R-O-U-P-E.
Oh, T-R-O-U-P-E.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody slowed down when those tubes went out, and so the speeders, who, you know, were causing a lot of problems on the road, they slowed down, so the 85th percentile ended up being 28 miles an hour, so that supports dropping the speed limit down. So that's great, that's fantastic, because, you know, what we really want is the people to observe that, you know, they should slow down. And so while we have, you know, a few people on the road that do like to drive their cars fast, it was more about trying to just get people to just do a standard.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Danny, for your words there. Lieutenant Counts, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Here's your pleasure.
Okay, no, just observing, sure, okay. Okay, do you have any other final comments?
I'm ready to go on myself.
And you?
No other comments, no, sir.
All righty, is there a motion to close the board?
I move to close the public hearing of 61918.
Second.
So move the second stated, to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Whether it's the pleasure of the board to move on the second motion, or do more analysis?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to make, I'm ready to second a motion if it's the right motion.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance amending the speed limits on all or portions of Boston Harbor Road Northeast, Boston Harbor Extension Road Northeast, 52nd Avenue Southwest, 184th Avenue Southeast, and include the above-mentioned roads and designated speed limits in Thurston County Speed Limit Schedule.
Second.
Move the second as it stated, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Okay, with that in mind, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is, I'd just like to make one more comment, if I may. Along with this change, Public Works, you put out signs of traffic revision ahead and such, and I would expect and hope the Thurston County Sheriff's Office would pay some attention out there, because many people still speed, and there's no guarantee everybody will observe it, but I very much like this. It's the right way, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn this public hearing.
Second.
Move the second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.